Let's officially call this special board meeting of the state of Oklahoma State of Education session. Jen, we'll start with the roll call.
Dr. Kincaid?
Here.
Mr. Newsom?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Mrs. Truitt? Mrs. Zimmershaw?
We have three members, therefore we do have a legal court. The purpose of today's meeting is obviously to discuss the recent explosion of the coronavirus, how it affects the Poughkeepsie Public Schools, and any action that the board wants to take in the general discussion as where we go from here. Just a couple of general comments. In my opinion, the Poughkeepsie School System has done an outstanding job of trying to mitigate the spread of the coronavirus. Everything from the bus drivers to the administrators to the teachers to the cafeteria workers, I'm sure I'm going to leave somebody out of my mentions, but everybody has done everything possible to try to keep these kids at school as much as they can. That's what we're going to do. We're going to have a frank and open discussion about where we go from here. Just to set the stage, and I know Shelley and Curtis have put a ton of effort in, they've got all kinds of data they're going to present to us, but we've gone from the week of October 11th, 48 new cases in K County, to we're up to 247 this week, and we still have one day to go. We had 90 new cases, positive tests, cases for coronavirus just yesterday alone. So, I mean, it's just exploding on us. So obviously something is going to have to be done. So, again, I think the Poughkeepsie Public Schools, I'll put us up against anybody in the state of Oklahoma, we've done everything possible to try to keep kids in school. May not be able to go on forward, I don't know. That's what we're going to talk about. So with that, Shelley, Curtis, it's your own show.
Okay, so we've prepared some data, and I've got our district data, and then Curtis is going to talk to you about some medical data and where we are. All right, so each week, you know, I put out the total numbers. Last week was a really brutal week. We had 18 positives. It's our most in any week. 326 close contacts, 344 out. This was as 11:30 today because we could not keep up literally keeping our data up to date, so I stopped. As of today, probably around 11:30, we've had 21 positives this week. Anything come up since then, Curtis?
You said five today?
Yeah.
Yep, that's it.
Okay, but, okay. Then, so 255 close contacts, 276 total. I want to point out that POHI is on distance learning. We don't have 1,200 of our kids together. Well, fewer than that, more than around 1,000 because some of those are virtual learners. So that's without POHI being on physical site. They're in distance learning. Now, I will also say, I checked, we have six open cases. Has that changed, Curtis? Okay, we have six open cases, meaning we have six people testing right now in school positives. We don't have the results. So that's significant. All right, so here was our site percentage out as of, I did a comparison just to show you how we've changed. It should say 1119 at noon because I think I got these updated. How it's changed from last Friday to today, and I highlighted POHI across the top because they're not even in session. Well, they are in session, they're in distance learning, they're not physically onsite. So they have gone down somewhat, but you can see the percentages. What I did on the right, if the percentage went up in the last three and a half days, I highlighted it red. If it stayed even, I kept it turquoise. If it went down, I highlighted green. So at East, West, Lincoln, Roosevelt, Washington Pre-K, and district offices, we had an increase with staff out. That's a lot of increases. If you look at students, we had an increase everywhere except POHI, but they're not physically onsite. East stayed the same with 49 cases. The percentages is .01 off, but probably our enrollment's changed. We've had a positive student or added a student. Garfield, I left them the same. They technically went down, but they didn't have a positive. This week they do. And Liberty has stayed the same, but every other school, the percentage has gone up. And I highlighted West, Lincoln, and Washington Pre-K with red stars. It's dramatic. West, last week, we had 9.82 students out. Currently, we have 20.23 students out, and it's Thursday. It will change tomorrow. I highlighted Washington Pre-K with a red star. Last week, they had 3.79 of their students out. This week, they've got 28.91% of their students out and nearly 19% of their staff out. I highlighted Lincoln Elementary with a yellow star because they went up the most in the elementary from 1.17% to 7.04%. They had no staff out last week. I really bragged about Lincoln, I think, at our last board meeting because they were doing so well, but it's amping right back up. So with the high school on distance learning, it's been a tough week. You wouldn't expect that. But I can tell you that it connects to the number of new cases, and I'll point that out to you. So here are our positive dates. For forever, we have had, we've had 59 and a half days, and forever, we have been a little bit ahead with having no positives, but we're way behind. We've already have a positive today, so I'm counting 1119 as a yes. And I've got some arrows here for you. So if you look at the first one, on nine of seven, we're coasting along there. That was Labor Day. Exactly two weeks after Labor Day, six straight days of positives, just bam 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 bam. And then we kind of had a little bit of relief. Then with the orange arrow, that's fall break. Then exactly two weeks, bam 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 bam, and we can't recover. I mean, we have still not recovered. But I think one thing that really impacted community spread was the snow day. People lost power, they were gathering together, they were helping each other, which is the Oklahoma standard. I'm not saying anything about that, but there were a lot of gatherings. On the 30th, that was Halloween, I think that kind of wanted us to. So we have had, I don't know, 15, almost 18 positives. We had one day where we didn't have positives on the 12th, and POHI had already closed, and we were thankful for that one day. Here's what really gives me heartburn are the 25th, 26th, and 27th. There will be a lot of people gathering for Thanksgiving, and that can be from out of the city, out of the state, it's going to be a lot of gathering. So I know two weeks after Thanksgiving, based on this data, realistically, it's going to be tough. We have three more weeks of school after the week of Thanksgiving, 11:30, 12:07, 12:14, until the semester break. So that's where we are as far as days positive and how the holidays have hit us. I usually show you trend data at the board meeting, and I updated this probably 12:15. And I put a star by the Labor Day weekend, and you can see we had a big increase two weeks after. I put a star in there where it was fall break. Two weeks after, we started going up. We had a really great week, the week of 10:30, but I want to remind you, we had the snow day where we had distance learning practice day, and we had a snow day. Snow day in distance learning because we were anticipating weather. So we had no student contact days those two days, and that's probably a little false good news. Well, it's been creeping up ever since then. The week that we transitioned POHI to distance learning, we doubled our percentage out from 5.2 to 11.18, and that's just in close contacts. Didn't quite double on our positives. As of this 10 seconds, we have 12.9% of our students out on a close contact, students and staff, and .53 on isolation. Now, let me tell you how this kind of works. On a typical school day, we have anywhere from 3.5 to 5.5% of our kids absent. We're at 12.89 with a minimum of two weeks. It's going to go on because they're in quarantine or isolation. So that's anywhere from three, two to three times more than we had, probably more than double what we typically have as far as absences go, and this is a quarantine, so it's going to be two weeks of close contact will be. Here is the COVID alert from last week, and the board wisely said that to be determined what our instructional level was. Last week, I think it might have been a little high. The last, the previous week, it was 28.9. I believe that was a little low. The way the health departments, county health departments, were reporting to the Oklahoma State Department of Ed was changed. So the week of November 5th, we had, we had a day of no reporting. The week of November 12th, I think they probably compensated for that day of no reporting. But what I can tell you is, we can tell when the risk level changes, and then I've got the color codes at the bottom that triggers into the risk levels. So here's where we have been. We started out in the yellow when I started tracking this, 7.76. You can see how we've done. We had some drops then in August, and then we went up after Labor Day. I would give anything to be in the yellow again. I would actually give anything to be in orange one or orange two for sure at this point. You can see how we've crept up. I've got the stars where the holidays are. And again, I think the November 5th data and the November 12th data are a little bit off, but they probably balance. I think we'll probably recalculate, and tomorrow's level will be accurate. However, we receive, based on our population, what the alert level triggers are for K County. We just received those last week. So when we're in the red, we have to have a seven-day average of 21.77. Last week, we had a seven-day average of 24.14, which made our alert system level 68.6, you know. However, we still have one more reporting day to go. Our current average is 35.7 with one more day to go. Now, I will tell you, I haven't been able to predict this without, I can get close, without the trigger. This is the first time we've had the trigger. Today alone, we had 90 new cases from yesterday to today. That has typically been our week's total. And I called Amy Lee Hunt. I was watching those numbers, and actually, I said, Brenda, I'm scrambling, watch that number for me. And she subtracted the total of new cases from yesterday to the total of new cases today. She said it's 90. I said, it can't be. Check again. And then a few minutes later, we followed this guy out of Watten, who actually puts the number on your counting, 90. It's correct. So I called Amy Lee Hunt at the Health Department, I said, Amy, is this likely? She said, without a shadow of a doubt. It's all through our schools. We've got community-wide spread. And now, we can't keep it out. We did a great job of mitigating, but once it's in, it's a struggle to keep out. So I think that our risk level tomorrow is going to be way over 68.6, which is high risk. Now, the spread rate is a big thing. So we've had 126 in-school positive. Forty-one of those who were close contacts converted to a positive. But up until this week, they've mostly been siblings, and I will tell you, superintendents have been upset about this. We have quarantined thousands of kids, some multiple times. And the state epidemiologist talked to us about the science behind it. If we get to widespread, that's the only thing that will mitigate. So only 2% of our quarantines up until last week turned to positive cases while in quarantine. Here's what's disturbing to me, in four days alone, actually, it's just three and a half, 11 of those 41 became positives. They weren't siblings, they were definite in-school close contacts. That's 27% of all of our kids who have changed from a close contact to a positive have turned into a case, which tells me that our spread rate is increasing. We had a situation today. We have a small office at one of our schools, and there's like seven people in an area, I don't know, it's not this big. And out of the seven people in that area, there have been four positives. Now, there are people have distanced, they've worn the mask, they are likely not close contacts, but we send the people who have not been a positive home today through Thanksgiving because it may be just a coincidence, but spread is so high, it was an administrative office and a secretaries. So we've got two secretaries there now. Like I said, we've got six cases that are open, so we don't know what's going to happen there. I collected, actually Curtis collected this for me, the activities data from November 2nd through 17th. So we just had a cutoff day. We had 11 contact days during that time because one was a distance learning practice day. We quarantined, this is at the secondary level only, 7 through 12. We quarantined 616 students, and 179 of those were tied to activities. So 29% of those were tied to activities. Currently, we've got 10 secondary activities closed. They're on close contact. And I didn't name the activity for confidentiality, but if you look, we had one on 11-3, 11-5, 11-6. On the 9th, the day of our last board meeting and the day that I recommended that we transition POHI to distance learning, we closed five activities on that day alone. Then we shut down another one on the 10th, and then just this week, we shut down, actually, it was a boys and girls, so you could count it too. We just called it one because it was connected to the same time. Okay, Curtis is going to give you just a little bit of medical data, and then I've got some points that I want to talk to you about after he does that.
Okay, another data point I want to be sure to cover is the medical data, and not only look at our local, but our county, and then look at also the state from a medical perspective. This is just some data that we shared with, that's by a couple of our nurses. And look, they're seeing, so it's very anecdotal, it's not, you know, there's not a lot of research behind it. But he, they're telling us that they're seeing a big, a trend in the severity of symptoms for our high school kids since the third week of October.
And our adults.
And our adults. Early on in August, given people had loss of taste of smell, sniffles, fatigue, allergic symptoms, okay? So it'd kind of be like a cold coming on, and then they get tested and they'd be positive. But currently, they notice that students are having GI issues, body aches, joint pains, severe cough, and severe headaches. And I have, just in the little bit that I've done with talking to parents and that kind of stuff, that headache piece is kind of, I've seen that quite a bit. So our nurses have noticed in their contact tracing and what we've done, that there's been a little bit of increase in the severity of symptoms for all of our people. And then, of course, the fevers as well. I talked to a couple of sources regarding testing. We, early on in August and September, we would get about a 24-hour turnaround for an instant test whenever somebody would get tested. What's happening right now is there's such a great influx of people getting tested that, and they're testing positive, and that's led to a backlog. So the Health Department is having to schedule people three days out. So if I want to get tested, the Health Department, then they say, come in next Monday. So they're not even scheduling me until Monday, and then it's another 48 hours. We worked a case today, and one of the cases we worked today is from last Friday. So during that time, from Friday and Thursday, that child had been in school, and affected several different kids. And so that's one of the things we're seeing with testing. It's not, there's not tests available. There's plenty of tests, there's plenty of supplies, there's manpower for that in Oklahoma.
Why wouldn't the Health Department recommend those kids not go to school until they get tested?
Well, they will split the dues, they, I don't know.
If we know about it, we tell them.
If we know about it, we'll tell them.
And that seems to be the logical thing, that if you're sick enough, feel bad enough to want to be tested, you probably shouldn't be going to school until you get tested.
Well, sometimes too, though, moms say, well, you were close contact, someone will get you tested. When mom, parents are going to get tested, then they'll bring their kids with them, and they'll find out. So I don't really answer that question why. But that's causing a little bit of a problem right now. Another thing too, is that this is something I noticed. Some kids, and most of the kids, they start getting sick, then they feel better. Fever drops, everything's fine, so it's normal, they come back to school a couple days later, symptoms pop back up again. So it kind of acts like a cold, it acts like something that's minor, and people are in school. This is from the White House Coronavirus Task Force that came out in November 15th from the White House. And I want to tell you a quote that they said, they said, "The spread in Oklahoma right now is exponential and yielding." Those were quotes directed from the Coronavirus Task Force. And one of the reasons they said this information I want to share with you is because our hospitalizations keep rising. And I, the way I read it, running them up is what I first said, but I decided to go ahead and look and see what the actual words were. But it was exponentially yielding. You see on the bottom left, our positivity rate across the state is 17.7, whereas the United States is 2.1. And we're growing. You can see that our positivity rate is growing according to the White House Coronavirus Task Force. This was a very, to me, a very, very disturbing piece of this puzzle that we shared with the gestation from the State Department of Education. You can see in August and September, how many cases there were, and have cohort group of students aged 5 to 17. You know, they started in August of '23, and you can see in November how much that spiked to 608 cases. And Joy Almister shared with us yesterday, the scary part about that for epidemiologists and medical peoples, because no one really knows what this is going to do to our body five years down the road. We don't know if there's any immediate effects. So that's a significant jump, as you can see, for students across the state to go from 23 to 608 in a matter of two months. This is what I was talking about as far as hospital admissions across the state. You can see that since July, there has been a steady increase in hospitalizations due to coronavirus. But really, if you look at the last two bars there, you can see a pretty big jump. And that very much correlates to the explosion that we saw in school. Like Ms. Eric said, a couple of weeks ago, we noticed, boom, big positive, big positive been, and that really correlates towards seeing there. And we can tell, like she said, when that number goes up, we know there's some goofy things with blah with recording, but we can tell, we can feel when that number goes up in school. This, where I spend a lot of time on this, early on, this is the tiered action plan that the state of Oklahoma put together for hospitals to handle a surge plan. And it's kind of like ours, when you get to a certain tier level, you do certain things to get prepared for a surge. Currently, we're in the northeast region, and our region is tier free. We're in tier free, we're in orange levels as far as hospitals go. But I kind of want you to pay attention to that tier four, that number greater than 39% COVID patients and staff beds, okay? As of last week, our hospital in our city was in the yellow zone. But we've had three oranges in weeks, three days in a row, so that elevated us to the orange level as far as our hospitals, which means that they're going to start prioritizing some surgical procedures and just kind of starting to do. But we also had a talk with Mr. Mendoza, the hospital administrator, yesterday, and he said that all looks really good on paper, but there's really not a pool of resources to draw people from. Right now, the whole state is orange, so there's not like to have a pool of nurses and we can say, okay, send us 20 nurses. So, and there's a look at our state. I said, we're in the northeast quadrant, and we were yellow as of yesterday. Actually, we just turned to orange today. So again, you can see in the hospital surge plan how the last couple of weeks, we've seen an increase in our area alone. This is some specific information about our hospital. Currently, 48% of the patients in the hospital are COVID-19 related. And I'll flip back to this right here, and you can see what they consider tier four is 39%. And so if every hospital in my region was like that, we'd be in red. But currently, right now, 48% of the patients in our hospital are COVID-19 related. CCU beds, eight of 10 are positive patients. So there are only two CCU beds in locally for us right now. They also, we've talked about this for weeks, that there's way out an option to move people to other facilities for positive COVID patients because everybody's having the same problem. And so the local hospitals are preparing for any kind of surge, you know, if you've got two beds available, and you've got five people who come in and they go to the hospital, you've got a problem. So they're preparing for that scenario. But it shows, again, it kind of falls in line for what we're seeing with this big explosion in our county and in our town. Any questions about that?
For those who may not know, Curtis and Don are both on the hospital board here. So we've got good infected for everybody in the hospital.
Okay, so just thinking about this whole situation, I'm going to talk about some points of success, and then I'm going to talk to you about some looming concerns. So some points of success. We started the school year, five days a week, in-person instruction since day one. The fact that we're still in school in mid-November, I believe, is a testament to our rigid mitigation as our risk levels continue to grow. But at some point, we can't keep the positives out, but I think it's been fabulous that we've made it thus far. Some schools never even started, some schools have been on an AB, and some schools have been in session, smaller schools, where they haven't had any positive cases. I think we worked as a team to develop our protocols, to implement them, and to support each other, staff, students, parents. We offered three learning options to our students so that they have alternatives if they're vulnerable, and to provide opportunity, face-to-face instruction, all activities included, online instruction and participate in our activities, or the most restrictive full online instruction. We have digital resources. We got our hands on Chromebooks and Hot Spots, and that's because our representative was proactive and said, do better order now, told Ryan, do better order now, and our board took action and approved that. So there are a lot of districts that can't get Chromebooks, they're tied up in China in customs. A lot of people can't get Hot Spots, and... A lot of people can't get Hot Spots, and we actually did, so that's a bonus. Our distance learning practice days have allowed our students instructional opportunities during quarantines, isolation, or instructional transition. Now, do I believe that's ideal? No, I've been a teacher for 38 years. Face-to-face instruction, Marx and I will take. Some of our kids really excel with online instruction, the full online. They're self-motivated, they're self-starters, but I've, you've never convinced me that face-to-face is not bad. It's not best. When we go to distance learning, our teachers are trying to have to do two options, and kids are coming in and out all the time. But I think those practice days have allowed us to be as successful as we've had, as we have been. We were able to continue with activities in a semi-regular or modified fashion. You know, we've had, I don't, we didn't cancel an activity, I don't believe. We've had several, we've come close. We had several activities or competitions canceled for us. When I say modified manner, we've had restrictions on our crowd size and who masks up and that kind of thing. Our teachers continue to fly a plane while it's being built. Nothing is predictable. We change every few seconds just because of the new data. And in fact, before we came up here today and before we hit that 90, you know, I'd even, I'd even change my thinking. So our methods of communicating with students and parents while maintaining high levels of professionalism, even though it's constant change, is commendable. The nutritional opportunities we've provided for our kids from back in March, we, we fed our kids, we feed our kids who are on virtual, we feed our kids who are quarantined. We're feeding Pohai when they're on, when they transition to distance learning. I think our communication and our transparency has been a point of success. It's taken a lot of work, but we, I believe our community knows what we're doing. We get the word out quickly, and we haven't hidden any of our facts. The data has been out there. So with that said, there are some looming concerns. The district data and the risk level continues to increase. The safety and the health of our students and our staff and our community is a looming concern. Uh, I'm afraid that we're to the point that the COVID spread and the new cases make it unsafe to operate for our students, our staff, and our community at this point. We can only control the mitigation inside the school. We, we can't control what happens after hours, so, so it's not, it's not, it's coming in. We, we've controlled it, but it's, we, we, we can't keep it at bay with risk levels so high. We didn't spread it. The long-term academic loss is a big concern for me. Our kids lost a whole quarter last year. The number of isolations and quarantine going in and out, you never know what mode of learning you're going to be on, the teachers never have the kids together at the same time. Some students are on their fourth quarantine we've had. This is our 14th week of school. If they're on their fourth quarantine, they've been out eight weeks. In distance learning, more effective probably than packets that we had last year went in the closure, when we closed the whole quarter. I'm really concerned about the mental health of our students, our families, and our staff. Our students are missing opportunities. Our students who are on distance learning are feeling isolated. That's a huge worry. I'm worried about our families and our staff, mental health is, is waning. Continued participation in distance learning, that concerns me. If we have to do that because I want our kids here and I want to be able to check on them and make sure they're fed and make sure they're not living in trauma, but it's the lesser of two evils. I can't bring them in and jeopardize their health either. The well-being of our students on distance learning is a big concern for me. And I'm not talking about their safety or their academics or their mental health. Some of our kids are going to face trauma, and some will be food deprived. That's a concern for me. Missed opportunities for our students, our kids have missed out on a lot. Kids are resilient, I will say, but I know that some of our kids are struggling right now. I'm worried about staffing. Our, we're hanging on by a thread with some of our staff. We cannot get subs. Our teachers are covering for each other. I mean, it, it's tough right now. Mitigation fatigue is killing our principals, our teachers, and to be honest, our central administration staff. We can do it, but it's real. So we're to the point of, we're fighting it so much, are we doing our kids justice being in school? And at, at some point, I think we have to have one learning mode and go with it. And then here's a big concern for me, based on the data, the upcoming holidays. I know what's going to happen after Thanksgiving. Well, I say I know. Based on our data, I think we will have a huge influx. I hope I'm wrong. Now, one thing that I want to talk to the board about, and this is the written verbiage of our protocols, if we go to the red level, more than 50 cases, you already decided when deemed appropriate, you would decide the, the instruction on that, that either in-person, alternate, or distance learning, when deemed appropriate, or as advised by local or state health officials, or if there's a mandate from the OSDE. There is not going to be a mandate from the OSDE. That was made very clear to us yesterday in our meeting with Superintendent Hoffman, although she employed, meant, told us to do the right thing. And, and she can only do what her board will agree to. In the event that PCPS moves to district-wide distance learning, Board of Education approval is required. Now, if we get to that point, students with disabilities who are unable to receive a free and appropriate public education solely through distance learning, as determined by the IDP team, and those students who are unable to receive instructional services through distance learning, not to exceed 15% of students enrolled at a site, may come onsite. And this is straight from the SDE's protocols. So if we should go to distance learning, our kids who receive special services can come onsite, up to 15% of the students enrollments at the site. And when you say, "and," those students who are unable to receive instructional services through distance learning, if our kids are on Edgenuity, option three, or in Wildcat Academy, they cannot end the course until they take the semester test. They will not get the credit. So we have got to get those kids in to take the semester test, and our policy allows for that. And this is from the, the SDE protocols. Extracurricular activities, okay?
Let me back you up there a minute. Amy, does that mean you can bring only 15% in, or can you bring all your students in?
We can bring not to exceed the 15%. All of the ID teams have met, and they, every, every child has a contingency plan in place, and right now, we're, we're under the 15% by site. Even like at the high school during COVID, or we've had some students that are still coming onsite to receive those services. Some of them are staggered too, so, you know, instead of like the whole, you know, like a severe profound classroom, instead of the whole class coming every day, some they come, you know, on certain days, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, others they come Tuesday, Thursday, it's sort of a different number there each day and within the classroom.
Okay, so another point is extracurricular activities and group assemblies. When deemed appropriate by the board, buildings and campuses may not be used for extracurricular activities, including spectator sports, assemblies, and performances. And of course, that's upon Board of Ed approval. So what questions, comments, discussion, concerns, what do you have for us?
Dawn, comments?
Sounds like me, to me, we're going to have to do something I really don't want to do, but I think we're going to have to shut her down. Shut the buildings down, disinfect them, get them ready for next year, January.
I agree with Dawn.
You know, it's a possibility we might be able to come back, but there's not enough time in between with the way these numbers are going, and I don't think it's going to get any better. We got Thanksgiving, and we got Christmas, and it's going to be worse after Christmas. So I don't know. That's kind of what I'm thinking. I don't know if you guys feel a little way or not, but...
In my honest opinion, of course, I've been talking to Shelley and Curtis daily on this whole subject. We've done everything possible. I started this little meeting, but basically saying, we've really done a good job mitigating. But I think we're at the tipping point. I don't think we can keep going the way we're going. I agree with what you're saying. I think, I think we've got to close it down. I hate to say that we're the keepers of the community, but to a degree, we're almost going to have to be, because we're starting to spread it at the schools where before, we were not spreading it, particularly at the schools. But now the numbers, the data's showing, you know, I, I will say this. I don't want to go on any one number. Mayor Como really did terrible yesterday when he put his 3% idiot down, closed school down, based on a single number. But all the data points to it's time to shut things down. And I'm not, I realize this is a major inconvenience for some parents, for both parents' work, but I also agree that if we shut it down, we probably need to shut everything down. It's hard to keep one or two schools open, shut the rest of them down, because then you get into, why this one, why that one? What about my siblings? And go to the high school when they're shut down, but you want to keep an elementary open. And even though there are a couple of elementaries that at this 10 seconds still look good, but they, they're going to continue to look, you know, that way. So I, I'm agreeing with you two guys. I think, I think at this point, now we just talked about how we shut it down and what the ramifications will be if we do shut it down.
Last night, Mr. Linton and I talked, and as of last night, you know, we were like, we need to shut down the secondaries and the pre-K center. And let me talk to you about why. The secondaries move from classroom to classrooms, and the elementaries are in cohorts. The pre-Kers, they're, they're four years old, they're babies, and they're active in their classroom. And the spread is high right now at the pre-K center. Now, before that, I probably would have recommended that we close the secondaries and, and the pre-K center. But after the risk level came out today, and after what we've experienced today, and those pending, responsibly, I'm going to have to recommend that we go to distance learning. And if I were being responsible, I would say we would look at our data in a couple of weeks. Realistically, I don't think that's, our data's going to improve because of the holidays and gatherings. But responsibly, and, and it's the lesser of two evils. Sending them to distance learning or keeping them here. But we cannot jeopardize their health. They're both bad options.
Yeah, I, I agree with what she's saying. If we do decide to shut it down, I think we need to retain the right. If some miraculous thing happens and the numbers significantly fall, I don't want to say that we're gone forever for the semester. But I think the parents need to be prepared. It is probably going to be for the rest of the semester. But, but I want to retain the right to take a look at it at some point down the road, if there's still enough time to keep schooling, to go back to school if the numbers get small enough, which I personally don't think they will, I mean...
So you're scheduled to come back the 4th of January, is that the, after the break?
Yes. And, and I will tell you, we prepare in advance for as many scenarios as we can. And, and you know, we offer distance learning when we went into the red zone for our parents. Uh, you know, we scramble all the time. We've got some frameworks in place for our distance learning. Uh, we've already been talking about strategies on, we focus on relationships where our kids aren't with them, ways to protect them, ways to connect, ways, give them ideas to stay positive when they're isolated from school. So if, if the board votes to go that way, which I think that's responsible at this point, our, we're up in our game in distance learning, and we're, we're... Kids can't sit in front of a computer for six and a half hours all day. So we're kind of, we're kind of alternating our course. And then we'll spend a lot of time on connecting, how you doing? Tell me what you did today. Reaching out to our kids. I'm worried about, talk to Jeff. If we go that direction, we will go to feeding like we did when we were in closure last year. And Jeff, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, we, we will start our five sites, high school, Union West, Garfield, and we will take the bus to Wide Eagle to pass out there. We're going to do hot meals, and as long as we can, because we already have the product. We work about two weeks out. And of course, it's all free, and they'll be able to pick up students meals if they're not in the vehicle, but we just have to have a name. And so we'll be doing production out of three different locations. So we're prepared to start that, you know?
Jeff, out of the approximately 1,200 high school kids that are on quarantine, distance learning, whatever you want to call it right now, how many meals a day are you possibly preparing?
We're doing 25, I think.
How many?
25. Not 25, we do about 11, I think. I, I think the elementary has been far more from that. I believe we knew that they, they, they did in the past. We could see the, the middle of the elementary being a strong user. Our, our biggest concern is if the parents are working, apparently they get a meal. And that, that's something we talked about for about 45 minutes yesterday. Really don't, don't have an answer, because we're going to do drop off, our pickup at the sites outside. And I, I shared with Shelley that my concern for our staff being outside in December. But we'll find ways around it, we'll make it work, and we're prepared to go. I would hope there would be more, but typically, high school kids won't, won't participate. So we'll focus some more on the elementary. But it will be, the high school will be a pickup site that anybody can pick up a meal there. It doesn't have, it has, it doesn't have to be your attendant at the site. You can go anywhere, and you have all those five sites to pick it up.
Would you do a similar lunch for today and then the breakfast for the next morning?
Yes, it'd be, it'd be better if it's much.
And, and the beauty of the different sites is, you know, if it's a Garfield parent and they work over by West, they could swing by and, and pick up a bunch of West. They don't have to...
I think the greatest thing is, is you need to get that out, that they know that they can go to any site and get the meals.
No, we wouldn't.
That's probably the biggest, so they don't think, no, I gotta go to the grade school, I've got grade school here.
Would they get breakfast and lunch?
They get the day's lunch and the breakfast for the next morning.
They get it at the same one time?
At one time. So they'll have the lunch, and then they'll have breakfast the next morning, and then they'll come and pick up lunch and breakfast.
The breakfast is a shelf-stable for breakfast, so it's not, it doesn't have to be kept. And we're going to try it a lot, because we have the product and we'll lose it. So we want to try it and use that up, get creative with our menus. We can try to publish that menu out, something I worked on this morning, is try to figure out how to publish that menu out, and have a separate site, and try to keep that fresh, if you can go and give it a read, some beginning of heart, you know? So it's something really important we want to do.
Before we move the discussion to extracurricular, I'm a little confused on Wildcat Academy. Will they still continue to go to school?
They can hear.
Or will they distance learn up until test time?
She can bring in 15% of her enrollment based on this policy, because they cannot finish the program... because they cannot finish the program on distance learning at all. They have to have that semester test.
We'll also have registration center open, so that those kids, and they'll limit the number of kids that can come in to take those comprehensive exams. We'll have middle school and high school students that will take those exams. So we will, we will, we will limit those times. We have some now that are taking the missing courses. Those two sites will have, will limit the number of kids that we allow to either of those sites.
So Mrs. Streeter could actually stagger her day and have fifteen percent of her kids in at a time?
Okay, let's jump to the contentious discussion about extracurricular. We're really talking about sports, high stepping, cheerleading, band, orchestra, anything other than the classroom education. They take it down.
I can get them then.
Shutting down? For the semester?
Yep.
Don?
Because you're just, you're not, it's still gonna spread.
Can we watch the data?
My personal opinion is if school shuts down, I don't think we'll have extra curricular. I mean, I think extracurricular needs to go along exactly with schools. If we open school back up, and maybe we'll open extracurricular back up. But as long as school is closed to distance learning, I don't think we can do extracurricular. That one here, both of you did?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the problem, the problem we got is, you don't even know what the high school has now, since they've been gone for a few days, and it's gonna get worse. Yeah, until it gets better, I mean, number-wise.
Mr. Layton and I talked about that. We've got some numbers from the high school, but we don't know how accurate it is, because parents are good about calling us, but if they're not in school...
They're not gonna call.
Yeah.
A lot of our, we find out a lot of information because of the way we address attendance. And when a student's not there, somebody in the school usually reaches out. We find a lot of information that way. We found out today from the Health Department about something, a case that we hadn't known about eight days ago. And that's how awful they were. So I don't know how much new information we'll get. We still like to contact tracing our students, even though they're on the school, based on their current status, I don't know. We find a lot of information if we reach out to parents when the kids aren't there.
Let me see if I've got Mrs. Tarrick's recommendation right. She is recommending starting Monday that we go to total distance learning for at least two weeks, and during that week...
We're distance learning till January the fourth, unless we change it.
That's what I thought too.
Okay, so, so the recommend, well, we're gonna be going for a motion here in a minute. So what we're looking at is closing down, kids taking Chromebooks home this Friday, school is basically shut down till, for the rest of the semester. And in the past, we, the board, see numbers get better, and we want to consider possibly opening it back up. Okay?
Possibly.
Don, who knows what it might be?
Yeah.
But is that, is that kind of what we're saying? Yes.
If you're gonna, we only have three weeks.
Because after December fourth, there's only two weeks.
Yeah.
And my pause for that, and realistically, I think that would be it, but we're not gonna have our kids for four weeks and then two weeks. And just, I just worry about them, you know? This is, this is hard. And realistically, I don't think, our data tells us that it's not gonna improve at this point. But we've gotta have our community help us at this point too, because we gotta get our kids back in.
No, they gotta get their kids, they gotta keep their, they gotta get their kids safe.
Without a shadow of a doubt.
That's it. I mean, we can't do that for them. We do it when they're in school, but when they're gone, they're all them.
I mean, we've given the community every opportunity we can. So we're at the point now that we've got to make some big changes. Okay, back to the possibility of coming back to school. Betty, what, forty-eight hours notice for a special board meeting? So anytime during that, if things look good, we can always call it two days out, another board meeting to discuss it, or to change it. But I pretty much agree with Don on this one. We need to retain the ability to let them back in, to bring them back if we can. But on the other hand, we don't want to give a false hope that this is for two weeks and then we'll make another big decision, decide it. Because I think the three of us are of the opinion that it probably isn't gonna get much better with the holidays coming up. Because if it was any time other than Thanksgiving and Christmas, it'd be a whole different story.
We agree with you. We don't think it's going to be better, but you know, I'm holding out hope for our kids.
Yeah, I don't really want to set another name for a special meeting if we don't have to. We can always call one in two days.
Yeah.
David, you agree with everything you said? Mr. Riley?
We've got another board meeting, yeah.
Huh?
We still have another board meeting anyhow.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on the...
Go ahead, first.
Is it, is, with our policy, does it require a board action to reopen the school? Only reason I'm asking is, with the numbers the way they are, if we can't get a forum, I think having, to pretend to have the flexibility to make that call, we're advising you guys, if for some reason we cannot get a forum together, for whatever reason, or gyms, or whatever. That's why I talked to you, we, does it take board action? If we, two weeks, we decide when we can do that.
I don't know, our attorney just walked out the door.
Well, depends on if we have a policy. I don't remember if we have that.
We don't have any policy. It's to, to, to close, to transition the entire district to district, to distance learning, it requires board approval. We've already got a calendar out there for in-person, so...
That's what I mean, if that, I think if that's good, I mean, we need that flexibility in case we can't get a forum. We don't want, we don't want to be, want to reopen in two, two weeks, three weeks, again, to get a forum.
What do you think, Don?
I don't think there's a problem.
And you guys know I'm not, I'm gonna talk to you all, I talk to you all the time.
But David's gonna have to be all for good.
We're, yeah, we're not gonna jeopardize our kids' safety. We will not.
But I don't remember seeing anything in this, in any of our policies that I know of. You have to go back and look through the policies. That policy doesn't say anything about when we open back up. I haven't, I haven't closed them. I haven't thought of that either, so...
I mean, if they open back up and we say no, we could always call a meeting, shut it back down.
We won't, we won't know when to back up. We'll have data to back it up and consult. Yeah, there's no way we're gonna go rogue and bring our kids into something that's not safe. But at the same time...
Yeah, we're at a hard time, two, all three of us.
This is my, I was thinking about worst-case scenarios, so...
Yeah, which is, which is a good point.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. What else, what do you want to talk about?
During Christmas, we don't, we don't do meals, right?
No.
Okay.
Not on break. So we talk about when this takes place. You know, Monday and Tuesday, we were supposed to be in school anyway. It would be tough to move people tomorrow. They need hotspots, the little ones need their computers. I would recommend to start Monday.
Yeah.
Doesn't come Monday and clean out, or not?
No.
No, Monday.
Start.
Take their stuff home tomorrow.
Take their stuff home tomorrow.
Today's the nineteenth, it's the twenty...
Nineteenth.
Too big of a...
Monday, February twenty-third.
Yeah.
So what we're gonna propose, and Don, you'll probably need to make a motion here in a minute, is closing school from Monday the twenty-third through... January second.
Shelly, transition.
When I say closing, I'm sorry.
It's sometime after the fifth. Okay. I don't know, can you pull the calendar up, Curtis?
Yeah, it's Tuesday. I'm thinking Monday, but they came back on a Tuesday.
Before this, right?
Before this, Monday.
Students return on the fifth.
You'd think we'd have the calendar memorized. I'm telling you, we focus on so much data, data. Teachers come back on the fourth? Did you say?
I think their teacher marked that.
Yeah. Students do...
There's a work day.
Students come back on the fifth.
Students come on the fifth. So we would total distance learning from Monday the twenty-third through...
Through the end of the semester, which is December eighteenth. Yeah, we don't close over the break, because we're already closed.
We'll end the semester.
Which is Friday, December eighteenth.
We'll leave it at that. This motion will also include all extracurricular, including practice. We want to make that clear.
Basically, especially after the break.
I'm sorry?
We're especially shutting down nobody inside the buildings after...
Right. Also includes all extracurricular, including...
We gotta have time to do cleanup. Because the teachers are gonna be in there during the next three, four weeks, right?
Yes.
In the classroom?
Unless they're quarantined, they're isolated.
Right.
Coaches, trainers, not allowed in buildings?
No, they're allowed, our employees are allowed in buildings, we're just, you know...
But students are not.
How many do?
I want to make sure...
Fifteen percent are, if they need special services or they can't do distance learning.
That's what I want to make sure. I want to make sure that we don't open the gyms now for basketball, sugar ranch.
You can do it during the holiday break, get all of them.
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, are we saying through December eighteenth? I mean, because sometimes they do over the winter, like they get together.
That's what I'm talking, that's what we need to talk about.
I say that depends on our data.
I think I'm gonna disagree with that, because I think we've got to say when it's through. Data may change it, I agree. But I think we have to upfront say whether they can... If the data keeps school closed through the eighteenth...
Oh, I agree with that, but...
If data keeps school closed through the eighteenth of December, are we gonna allow practices in the gym after the eighteenth?
That's the question.
That's what I'm...
We'll know more on that in the next board meeting.
Yeah, I think we'll know more on that at our next board meeting. But right now, Monday to Friday the eighteenth.
I wouldn't exclude him yet until we said...
You would what?
I wouldn't exclude him, let Shelley decide that.
Exclude after the eighteenth of December.
And go to the eighteenth, and that shuts it all off.
To the end of the semester, which is December eighteenth? But during that time, no practices, no anything in the gyms. And so we have to make a decision then at the next board meeting, what to do from then on? Which is fine, I mean, I don't care.
We probably can, the next board meeting's the fourteenth, we'll have several weeks of data.
Fourteenth of December.
December.
Okay, be sure and put that, Betty, on the agenda of the, on the December fourteenth meeting.
We'll have that as part of the report too.
That's good timing on that meeting, huh?
Yeah, it is.
So are we close enough to know what we're looking for, for a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion that we, we have distance learning from the...
Monday the twenty-third?
Monday, November the twenty-third through December the eighteenth.
Friday, December eighteenth, yes.
Which is the end of the semester.
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
And including, are there no sports?
Yeah, no extracurricular activities during that time.
Including no extracurricular activity.
Right.
You got it?
I second it.
We've got a motion from Don and a second from David. Anybody got any last comments or questions, or we vote? Call for the vote, Jan?
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Rieser?
Aye.
Motion terries.
Motion adjourned.
Have a motion from Don to adjourn.
Second it.
Second from David. Call for the vote.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Rieser?
Aye.
Motion adjourned, thank you all.